Hello, everyone. Welcome to Louisville. Welcome to Kentucky. It's my hometown. I'm Sarah Fritchner. I'm the coordinator of the Louisville Farm-to-Table Program, which tries to put more money in farmers' pockets by finding markets in Louisville. It's the largest city and economic driver in the state. And so what we try to do is find markets, work with the school lunch program, which serves 60,000 lunches a day, to find products that they can serve easily. Work with the university, which has a dining service company called Sedexo, which is also in several other colleges throughout the state. And just work very hard, and as Congressman Pingree said, very slowly. But we are making progress. And for instance, right now, we have frozen green bean squash and butternut squash and sweet potatoes available to all schools throughout the state, 120 districts and 60 independent districts. So that's a great win. We've been working on that for about two years. Everything I touch takes two years. So we've worked for two years, and now we've got frozen vegetables available for schools and also through Cisco. So our major broadliner has these products that it can take to our large-volume users. Thank you. Thank you. It is great. I work on large volume because I'm -- my salary is paid by a grant, and the grant always lasts two years. So I started very early on thinking about how I could make a bigger impact in a shorter time. So I started working on large volume. I also believe, especially with horticulture, that it makes more of an impact if you can -- if a farmer can sell a large amount of something. Horticulture, a head of broccoli, is not always a super lucrative item if you sell it five or 10 or even 20 cases at a time. So we're sort of -- or I'm sort of concentrating on a larger volume. I have with me guests from all aspects of the food system. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves and tell you who they are, why they are doing what they're doing, and how they came to do what they're doing. So Patrick, do you want to start, please?
Thank you very much. I'm Patrick Holden. I just arrived here last night from my farm in Wales, and I'll speak a little bit more about that in a moment. I'm so happy to be here in Louisville because Louisville is the center of an emerging new model, I think, for how the food systems of the future should be designed. And I feel very proud to have this connection with Louisville, which I hope will be ongoing. I'm here today, and I'm going later to New York to participate in the New York Times Food Conference. Then I'm coming back again to participate in the Biodynamic Conference. So how interesting that Louisville is the stage for these hugely important national events, indeed international events. And wonderful to have Greg Fisher and, of course, Wendell discussing these issues, just to name two of the previous panel, and so Louisville-centric. I'm also a farmer, and I've farmed for 41 years, sustainably as I've been able to, on a small parcel of land in West Wales. And for me, the importance of my relationship with the farm has given me a lot of insights into the question that the last panel we're discussing, namely the issue of local and global. Because it seems to me that the farm is like a cell of the food system. And if we can understand the small, then we can understand the whole because everything is connected. The laws of the universe are such that everything is connected. And the food system, you could think of, is like an enormous organism, which is the sum of its collective parts, the cells. And if we get the cells healthy, then the food system as a whole can be healthy. So I think that the two are connected, but one should start with the local. So on my farm, what I've been trying to do for all these years is to minimize my use of non-renewable external inputs, to practice the law of return, the recycling of nutrients, to build soil fertility, to try to integrate biodiversity with food production. You're seeing slides here. The slides there, just going on now, are a new manure storage lagoon, which we're going to do for anaerobic digestion. There's some wildlife. There's a party which took place last year to celebrate 40 years on our farm. So I didn't get the -- I didn't catch the beginning of it. But essentially, what I've been trying to do is to explore on my own farm whether the sustainable cell can be viable. And my news, really, literally right up to date, is that it's very difficult, if you're trying to do the right thing by sustainable principles, to make an economic case for it. And the reason for that, we just heard on the film, is because of the absence of true cost accounting. And true cost accounting is a theme that my new organization, the Sustainable Food Trust, is championing. We held an event here in Louisville in April last year, and then another one in London in December last year, on the theme of true cost accounting, which, the way I would describe it, is the way in which the -- both the positive and the negative consequences of different farming and food systems are not factored into the costs that you -- that either farmers are charged or benefits they receive or the price that we pay for our food. And as a result, we've got a distorted economic system where doing the right thing, if you're a farmer, means that you are less profitable or not profitable at all. And doing the wrong thing, that's the best business case. So you can't blame the farmers or the food companies of America or any other place in the world for following the best business case because otherwise, they go out of business unless they're slightly mad or an early adopter or have a day job like me. And my wife said to me yesterday morning, when I was leaving the farm -- I milked the cows over Saturday and Sunday before leaving yesterday morning. She said, "What a shame that in this period, this brief period of your life, when you're earning a reasonable amount of money, you're spending it all on backing the dog of the farm." Meaning, a farm which is actually, even though it's a great farm, and I think we're doing things more right than wrong, can't easily make money. And we, the Sustainable Food Trust, are trying to do something about that by identifying, categorizing, and attempting, with others -- this is not us doing all this, but we need -- this work needs to be done -- and quantifying both the extent and the range of different externalities, as economists call them, arising from different farming and food systems. So to take an example, some work has been done on assessing the impact of nitrogen fertilizer. If a farmer buys a kilogram of nitrogen fertilizer, it probably costs about $1. Put the fertilizer on the land, and you get $3 of return. Don't quote me on those exact figures, but that's the gist of it. So there's a good business case for using nitrogen fertilizer. But of course, nitrogen fertilizer kills off soil bacteria, accelerates the oxidization of organic matter, induces unhealthy growth of crops, which results in the need for pesticides, fungicides, herbicides, and so on and so on. And the European Union have done some assessment of the negative externalities arising from nitrogen fertilizer. And they calculate, including the health and environmental damage, pollution, that sort of thing. They calculate at the very minimum, if you're being ultra-conservative, it's $3 per kilo. But if you add all the possible health externalities, which we also mentioned in the last panel up, it's probably more like 10. So in other words, there would be no business case for using nitrogen fertilizer, which is probably the single biggest intervention of intensive agriculture, which has caused all the problems we've got into, if you costed or charged the farmers in the form of a tax, which is also mentioned, the cost of the damage that they're doing to the environment and public health. That's what we need, and that's what the Sustainable Food Trust, one of the programs that the Sustainable Food Trust, my new organization, is championing. A final few words about my organization. We're very small. We're based in the UK, but we're working internationally. And our mission is to accelerate the transition to more sustainable food systems, working in three areas. The first, building collaborative partnerships between individuals and organizations working in the wider field of sustainability, including, of course, slow money. The second, true cost accounting, a good example, create -- trying to work towards understanding the nature of the problems we've got, quantifying issues with good science, building a case for policy change, as was also discussed in the last session. So we need to change the farm bill. We need to change the common agricultural policy. But it's not going to happen without the data and the science. Third, getting the wind of public opinion to drive the changes that we all agree are needed. Because unless the public understand the nature of the problems we've got and potentially the solutions and the enabling conditions to create an economic environment where doing the right thing pays, change isn't going to happen, as we've seen from the Obamas and from the Camerons. So that's basically my organization. It's small, but we hope to be catalytic in bringing about the changes that are needed.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Wicks. And is this working?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I thought I'd tell two defining stories that really explain my work. There was a farmer who supplied the White Dog Cafe with organic vegetables. That's my business in Philadelphia, beginning in about 1986. And he once said to me that successful farming is the balance between the masculine and the feminine, between efficiency and nurturing. And it got me thinking about how the industrial agricultural business is all about efficiency and not about nurturing. It's totally out of balance. And when I heard about the factory farming of pigs in 1998, I was horrified to find that these mother pigs are kept in these tiny stalls where they can't take a step forward or backward or turn around. And I realized that my own business must be selling this pork because unless you know otherwise, that's where the pork comes from in this country. So I finally just walked into the kitchen and said, "We have to take all the pork off the menu, the bacon, the pork chops, the ham, that we cannot be a part of this system." And we went about looking for sources for pastured pork and found them. And then I found out about the play to the cow and how cows are herbivores and are supposed to eat grass. So we found sources for grass-fed beef and, of course, for pastured chicken and eggs. And then I finally said, "Well, we have a cruelty-free menu. All of our animal products come from small family farms where the animals are treated with respect and are nurtured. This is going to be our market niche. This is our competitive advantage." And then I thought to myself, "Well, Judy, if you really do care about those pigs, if you really do care about the small farmers that are being driven out of business, if you really care about the environmental damage, whether it's all this manure and 10,000 pigs in one barn going into the waters, and if you really care about the consumers eating this meat full of antibiotics and hormones, then rather than keep this as your competitive advantage, you'll share this information of your sourcing with your competitors." So that was a real turning point in my life. And everything changed really after that because I moved from a competitive businessperson, a good businessperson, thinking that my goal was to have the best practices within my company, to realizing that there is no such thing as one sustainable business. We can only be part of a sustainable system and that we have to cooperate in order to build that system. So I started a nonprofit organization called Fair Food and began putting 20% of my profits into Fair Food. And it was -- the first assignment was to go around to the other restaurants in town and give them a list of the suppliers that we had developed over years of hard work, of where we got all of our farm products, the phone numbers and list of supplies and so on, which turned into eventually a local food guide. And then I turned to the farmer who was bringing me in two pigs a week. And we had to buy the whole animal. We wanted to buy the whole animal and file it used for all the meat on our menu. I asked him if he wanted to expand his business, and he said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, what's holding you back?" And he said he needed $30,000 to buy a refrigerated truck so that he could deliver it to more restaurants. So I loaned him the money, and he bought the truck. And since that time, that was like 14 or 15 years ago, Fair Food has grown, has a year-round farm stand, open seven days a week, representing about 100 different producers. And so I was really able to grow the network that supplied the White Dog Cafe into a much larger network of farmers of all different sizes that supply our region, including institutional buyers. So the second story I want to tell was how I went from that into seeing the relationship between what I was doing and the global economy. In 1994, when NAFTA went into effect, the day that NAFTA went into effect, January 1st, 1994, the Zapatista Indians in Chiapas had their uprising. And I was very curious about why this happened on NAFTA, on the day that NAFTA went into effect, and went down there and ended up working with those Zapatistas for a 10-year period. And they objected to NAFTA because they knew that when the borders were lower between Mexico and the United States, that American corporate corn growers, subsidized with the tax farm bill, would go into Chiapas and put out business the indigenous farmers. And so they said, "No mas." So their uprising was really about local self-reliance, and I had never really thought about that before. They were demanding their right to grow their corn and sell it on the domestic market price, to be able to grow their beans and squash and other fruits and vegetables to feed their families, to maintain their own culture and not be sucked into the global monoculture of corporate globalization, and keep their own dress, teach their kids in their own languages with their own customs. So this idea of local self-reliance made me see that around the world, whether it was in Chiapas or Philadelphia, that we are losing our local self-reliance and become dependent on large corporations to not only deliver us our food, but deliver us our energy, our clothing, our building supplies. So that's what inspired me in 2001 to start Bali, the Business Alliance for Local Living Economies, which now is a -- thank you, there's some Bali people out there. We're now a network of about 50,000 small independent businesses and community leaders and the funders of local economies. And we work to connect the leaders of all these different local economy movements and to spread the solutions and to drive investment locally. But now I'm really focusing in on, because I was thinking, why did I change? What made me change? And when I made that decision to share with my competitors and focus on building the whole local economy, it wasn't because I decided in my head, "Well, this is the right thing to do." It was because I love the pigs. You know, I felt it in my heart. And even though I was afraid to make that decision, I was afraid our sales would go down, our profits would go down, and so on. It was my love for animals, for nature, for a community, for family farms and local food that overcame my fear. And I feel that this need to transform our economy from one that's life-destroying to life-giving really begins with the awakening of the heart of the entrepreneur and the investor and the consumer as well. So my work now, through my book, Good Morning Beautiful Business, and through Bali, is really to awaken the heart and to make decisions with compassion. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. A little bit of my background. I come to farming eight years ago. My wife and I bought a little farm in Lincoln County, which is where I grew up, that's here in Kentucky. I'm a local boy. And we bought the farm with our life savings. It seemed a prudent thing to do with money. And then we borrowed a little bit to buy a cow herd. And that put us in a similar situation to a whole lot of conventional farmers around Kentucky. Namely, we were continuous grazing. That means having a perimeter fence where the whole herd had access to all the grass at the same time. We sold all of the -- our only product was calves, which we sold at the stockyards. And thus, they began a long and anonymous journey through the industrial American food supply. And we, perhaps most telling, we had other jobs. We were pursuing an ideal of living on the farm, but we were only snatching bits of it between the time that we had from our other jobs. From there, six years ago, we kind of had a conversion moment. Both of us, interestingly enough, from books, but different books. Mr. Berry was in no small part to blame for my current predicament. And we changed up what we're doing. So the perimeter fence became a series of smaller paddocks where we practiced the absolute flabbergasting benefits of management-intensive grazing and diversified species. We bought chickens and pigs, and we made the conscious decision to sell as much as we possibly could as food for people and not commodities into an anonymous food supply. And that continued to grow in no small part, thanks to Sarah's help and her job. And I partnered with some guys, and we started a multi-species processing facility where we not only sell my products, but we partner with a number of other farmers around the state and buy stuff from them and put it in the local marketplace, trying to connect local consumers who care deeply about what they eat and then the farmers who may not want to be everything to everybody, may not want to market all their stuff, may not want to distribute their own things, but they want to excel and innovate on their own farm. We want to provide an outlet for those. And, you know, I come to this local food thing as a thinker, I suppose. Before I was farming, I cared deeply about ecological stewardship, cared deeply about the relationship of agriculture and culture. And, you know, all those things were really important to me. My education was in the humanities, and I guess that made me uniquely unsuited for any job. So I became a farmer. But in the last 10 years, it's been -- it's been much more a relationship of doing with the local food world rather than thinking. And it's only in situations like this that I really get to -- I have pause to think about why I try to do what we're trying to do. And for me, it's very local motivations. And just, you know, to give you a bit of an insight as to what motivates me, it's really not a grand narrative of what agriculture should be. It's in Kentucky, and it's very specific. It's about two things. It's about pasture, grass. Grass is Kentucky's greatest natural resource, I would argue with anybody. And it's sustainable. When managed correctly, it's ecologically nourishing, improves the soil, improves the land, improves the livestock, improves the farm families that use it, and improves the health of the people who buy what comes off of it. And the second thing in Kentucky is our intellectual capital. Because of a unique history, that includes a lot of great and not-so-great things and great sides of lots of things, including the tobacco industry and others, we still have a number of very small farms, very small holdings that are still quite diversified. And although the farming community is aging, it's a big motivation to me to try to provide an outlet for folks who want to continue to stay small and diversified and an outlet that provides an economic incentive for people to do that rather than incentive to continue to become bigger and bigger conglomerates and join and get out. So, thanks.
So Preston? Preston is one of the partners in a small processing plant, processing and distribution plant, four species, beef, pork, chicken, and lamb. And so he aggregates the product and processes it and distributes it, which is three of the big, "How are we going to do this?" questions. March Berry is his plant, and they do that. Richard?
Thank you, Sarah. My name is Richard McCarthy. I'm executive director for Slow Food in the United States. I'm proud to be associated with and representative of the world's largest civil society expression for food sovereignty, for the commitment and the vision that we can live in a world where food is good, clean, and fair for all. I fell towards food 25 years ago. I was a rabble-rousing political activist in New Orleans. If you could find a barricade, I'd be there. And I worked in labor and environment and race relations. And I grew really wary of the barricades. I grew wary of spending all of my time with their issues. You know, this amazing ability to rally around deficits rather than to rally around assets. And I sort of abandoned that social movement model and ran towards food and saw that in New Orleans, food is something that -- well, actually, in New Orleans, food is something we're obsessed with. But food is this cultural common denominator that could begin to grow a healthy relationship between commerce and community that could become the social space where we rekindle what is our shared history, our shared community, a different political culture, a small P political culture around something we have in common. And so I became part of the, sort of, the advance troops in the food revolution in the deep south in reinventing farmers' markets and CSAs and the whole regional connection, the urban-rural connection. And it was towards the end of the last century, when running my organization Market Umbrella, that Slow Food found me. And it was -- came in, you know, an envelope from Italy, largely incoherent and colorful. And I knew that was for me. And what it said to us was some truths that we knew in our community and that we knew we were out of step with the dominant paradigm of life and commerce in America, which was the audacity to believe that food is not just fuel, but that food is community, food is the future, food is each other. And that struck a chord for us in New Orleans because we felt so out of sort with the 20th century. The other thing it also pointed out was that we were not irrelevant. And this was something that we felt as the 20th century defined progress as nomadic and scale-driven and efficiency-driven. And we were anything but scale and efficiency. We were the place that treasured traditions and biodiversity and cultural diversity and the blending of people. And Slow Food became, you know, sort of an aha, that this is actually the movement we were part of. And when our infrastructure collapsed in 2005, it was Slow Food that was really the one entity that rallied around us because it said that this national and then global community that we connected to said, "You're not alone. We're with you." And helped us to connect supply with demand and wild bands of shrimpers traveling around the country and citrus farmers connecting to consumers. And so two years ago, I left my sort of beloved food shed of deepest Louisiana for Brooklyn to head up Slow Food USA and to find that wormhole in the universe that food does between the libertarian left and the libertarian right, that safe haven between joy and justice, and to try and rekindle some of the ideas of these incredible nodes, the 175 chapters of Slow Food communities around the country that operate in their kind of rugged libertarian fashion as fulcrum for really that strange space between alternative philanthropy, grassroots philanthropy, and alternative investment. And that is what local Slow Food communities do. The other two areas that I have nationally rekindled the national Slow Food community around is our two deep investments. Aside from allowing the local Slow Food communities to get up to trouble and do wonderful, high-risk things, is to really invest deeply in school gardens in order to grow the next generation of kids who love food. If you're going to address the chronic disease issues, it's not going to come out of badgering children not to eat certain food. It's going to be creating their leadership, their autonomy, to begin to love good food because they know it, because they grow it, so that they can begin to maneuver these difficult decisions that they face in the marketplace. The other is to address an issue that I, of course, have been running away from most of my life, being a lifelong vegetarian, is the issue of meat. And we have embraced the idea of slow meat, a campaign for better meat and less, a safe space to pull together vegetarians like me with ranchers and butchers and chefs and consumers and advocates and policy advocates in order to regrow our local food economies and communities around a just and humane raising of animals and to really address the tyranny of cheap food and the role that meat plays in that tyranny and how we are trapped in this culture of confinement that confines rural communities, it confines animals, it confines our biodiversity, and it confines our taste. And I guess at the end of the day, the exciting thing for me is that we might even be able to pull together the paleos and the angry vegans to actually talk. Because they are freeing us up from the idea, that state idea that a meal involves a hunk of protein, anonymous hunk of protein, surrounded by a supporting cast of characters known as vegetables or, in Washington DC talk, specialty crops. That we maybe can reorder the role of meat in our diet, where it is flavor, not just focus. And where, through readdressing the scale and nature of how we organize meat in our economy, that we can begin to regrow our local communities and our local regions around better meat and less. And of course, in our Slow Food fashion, it's around pleasure and taste and balancing that pleasure and taste with responsibility. So our campaign involves crazy things like nose-to-tail gating to address what's going on in stadiums, Meatless Mondays, and Eating Nose-to-Tail, the labels. But it also involves convening people. So much like this incredible convening. So much like this incredible convening, we will be convening in Denver in June of 2015 as an international gathering around meat, because we have exported this horrible meat economy around the world, and we need to take ownership over it to change it. So, I'm here, and thank you.
So Wendell Berry likes to say that there are no big solutions, that what we need is a lot of small solutions. That said, we face some very big structural problems, such as true cost accounting, Patrick, and many other rules of finance and policy. Would you be able to speak about the, all of you, any of you, but Patrick has already brought it up, about local and global interplay?
Well, I could start by telling a story about my carrot career. I used to be a carrot grower. In fact, I think I could have described myself for a brief period of time as Carrot King of Wales, because there weren't a lot of them grown. But I started growing them in 1979 and originally supplied Cranks Restaurant in London and one of the pioneer Whole Foods shops called Whole Foods. And then eventually, I ended up supplying supermarkets, sending carrots to be packed in my local town, which is Lampeter. But then the supermarkets adopted a policy, which you can't really blame them for, which they've more or less applied to all their commodity sourcing now, which is one abattoir, packing plant, packing station, processing unit for each of their commodity crops. So as a result, they progressively closed all the regional and decentralized processing operations down until there was any one left standing, and that was 230 miles away from my farm in the eastern counties. And that had the consequence of wiping out all the people like me who were supplying carrots with a good story to the supermarkets. And I finally had to throw in the towel and give up, because it was just too costly to send them to the other side of the country, only to bring them back to, in some cases, supermarkets down the road from me. And I think in that story is a question, which is, why did they do that? Because you'd think, you know, if their customers were interested in buying carrots with a better story, surely it should have worked. But the truth is that the economies of scale in the present system, where true cost accounting isn't applying, demand that they do that, because if they kept all the small packing stations, they'd lose money against their competitors. So I think we've got to sort out this issue of identifying where the real costs, as was discussed in the last session, are, need to be factored into the equation. So for instance, if it's more efficient to centralize the processing and distribution of food, which it is at the moment, there's a better business case for it, which company that wants to stay in business is not going to do that. So you can't even blame these companies that have got this centralized policy. So I think the absence of true cost accounting and putting a proper price on things and taxing wherever the source is, the practices which cause environmental damage or public health damage, which is probably the biggest single externality, and rewarding farmers who create jobs. I mean, interestingly, is a job a positive or a negative externality? Because in the present economic system, if you save, if you reduce the number of people working on your farm or in your processing business, you're going to make more money. So effectively, it's treated as something that you want to get rid of, employment, whereas in fact, if we create a job, that's a positive externality. We need to find ways of factoring that into the equation. If you go back to my nitrogen example, if we taxed nitrogen in proportion to the damage done, that would be transformative. And if we could find these little solutions and put them into the farm bill and sort out where things are really distorting the present food system to such an extent that if you had a firm of auditors assessing it, they would declare it fraudulent, it's almost as bad as that, then we could create the conditions where all the stories that we've just heard would become mainstream. Because at the moment, it's only people who've got brilliant entrepreneurial flair, who've got a day job, or who have just created a special, I mean, some of the big box schemes and CSAs are example of where you can sort of hang in there in this very hostile economic environment. But I think if we want transformative change, we have to deal with the nettle of this distortion in the economics of food and farming. It won't be easy to do, because as Wendell said in the last session, food is too cheap and it needs to become more expensive, and that's very politically unattractive to introduce policies which will apparently put the cost of food up.
I will say that in my work, that Wendell Berry also talks about shortened food supply chains, and that idea of the central location and distributor is a huge impediment. People always talk about local food costing more, not being good enough quality, or not being good enough, not having enough to serve the massive audience that these large-volume feeders have. But in fact, a lot of it has to do with the degradation of the supply lines, so that there's only one shot from here to there, and all things factor into that. So that, I'm really glad you brought that up. Judy?
Well, in thinking about this interplay between small and large, I was thinking about how E.F. Schumacher once said that we need to pursue small scale on a large scale, and that we need to have unity and coordination nationally and even globally in order to do this. But that doesn't mean growing our enterprises larger and larger, that means, you know, spreading our models rather than our brands. And so, as an entrepreneur, I think about growth, and that really begins, in some ways, with the entrepreneur. Instead of growing the companies bigger and bigger and bigger and becoming global in size, how does an entrepreneur grow in this new economy? And, you know, I think of chain stores and national brands and whatnot as being like invasive species. They go into other people's communities and smother out the local businesses there. So how does nature grow? Well, nature grows in a place, in an ecosystem. And I believe that's how we entrepreneurs can also grow. We can grow deeper in our place to, as nature does, to become more diverse, more complex, and more adaptive to the needs of our own ecosystem, our own community. So instead of starting a chain, an entrepreneur can look to see, well, what does my community need, and start that business. My favorite example of that is Zingerman's Deli in Ann Arbor, Michigan, very successful deli, some Zingerman fans out there. And instead of doing a chain of dillies, they started businesses that their community needed, that replaced imports. They started a creamery to make cheese and ice cream. They started a fair trade coffee roasting company. They started a cookie company and a candy company, all these different yummy things. So I feel like that's the way we need to reimagine a growth as entrepreneurs in this new economy.
You know, I think that consumers are obviously the key here. Nobody in the food world is successful or unsuccessful, except by the will of the consumer and the mass of people. And folks make decisions in food, just like anything else, for the same reasons that they do otherwise, for, you know, whatever unique combination of selfishness and altruism that they're dealing with. And the way they, you know, that has to do with what they feel about what's going to happen to their health, how it impacts the economy around them. All these things impact the way people make decisions and the ability for them to self-determine their own future. And I really think that the, excuse me, wait a second. I feel that, I just lost where I was, excuse me.
Global, local?
The, yeah, I don't know if I can catch you back. I'll jump in in a second, though.
Okay. Richard?
One thing that really comes to mind that is unexpected in the rise of true cost accounting in discourse in America has been the convergence of the local vor food conversation with public health, and recognizing the return on our investment is generation of chronic diseases. And how that has somehow squeaked into the farm bill with, as Shelley Penney described, the SNAP incentive success, the $100 million for SNAP incentives. What is so funny about that is that that grew out of the, you know, allegedly hyper-elitist farmers' market movement that was all about vertical garnish and exotic heirloom produce. And actually, what it grew out of was farmers' markets are the visible expression of a new social contract between supply and demand, between urban and rural, in a public space where actually generations are beginning to figure out, what does it mean to be civically engaged and invested, and maybe sharing in some of the risk, the risk for a small farmer to take on, holding onto the product all the way to the point of sale, which is terrifying and high-risk, and it is also rewarded. And similarly, the vulnerable consumer, who does not have the bandwidth to take risk figuring out what to do with this coal robbie and all these peculiar things they've never seen before. And the fact that the incentive campaigns, the Double Up Food Bucks, Market Match, all of these are mechanisms, small-scale mechanisms, to reward that risk. And I think as we begin to recognize that shared risk, we begin to weave together a new social contract which can go to scale. It is not obsessed with scale, but it has grown through the shared experiences in local communities.
Can I just pick up?
Sure.
Sorry. Just to pick up the point that you made about public health, we're having a discussion now with, which is involving our UK Chief Medical Officer, about the impact of agriculture and food systems on public health. And the categories that we're looking at are antibiotics resistance and the effect on the damage that's causing through people dying and through the acquisition of bacterial resistance to antibiotics, obesity and diabetes, which now, there's a man called Martin Blazer who's written a book called Missing Microbes, where he's shown that there is a direct link between the use of prescribed antibiotics and the emerging obesity epidemic in children in the US, and endocrine-disrupting chemicals. And if you just add those three areas together, plus eating the wrong kind of meat, because grass-fed cows can save the planet, I believe, obviously, I would say that, and also, grass-fed meat is different in the composition of omega-3 and 6 fatty acids in a positive way. So there's the issue of aligning one's diet to the outcomes of sustainable agriculture and being healthier as a consequence. But if you put the costs into the equation, just of the damage which is being done to public health, these externalities alone would correct so many, if we just addressed those and made the links, they would correct many of the distortions which are driving agriculture in the wrong direction at the moment.
So I'd like to take up what Preston brought up about consumers, because I work with consumers, and I like to say, like Lily Tomlin, I'm an ordinary housewife. So I sort of think like that. And I spoke, I worked with CenterPlate, which is a dining services contractor. They come into entertainment venues, they present all the food, they're hired to make all the food and purchase all the food. And they all have these litany's of compliances that they have to buy from X people, and they have to buy X amount. And it's another one of these long-chain issues where there's no entry point for a local farmer. And so, two years ago, one year ago, the Unitarians came to Louisville, and they have it in their contract, they did, they had a summit here, and they put it in their contract that they had to have local food at the summit. And after they left and sent CenterPlate scurrying to find local food, which they did a fairly good job of, the CenterPlate people got in touch with my boss, who works for Mayor Fisher, and said, "Time to chat." And so, a little later, we all met, and CenterPlate was very receptive to, Preston's salesperson came in and talked to him all about the kinds of products they have. We had the frozen vegetable people in, we had the already-made-to-serv sweet potatoes out of a bag, ready, you know. He was, they were talking, and they put together menus for clients that they can now present to all of you if you should have your summit here next year. And when the Future Farmers of America were here last week, two weeks ago, 60,000 of them, CenterPlate was prepared to feed them and did feed them local food. So I just wanted, yeah, you're right. So it's not 100%, it's not 100% of the time, but I just want to, I always want to leave this message with you, that you have the power. I have a picture of the Unitarian who went to the CenterPlate and said, "We want local food." And she was just a woman like me, and she just said, "We have to have, that's the rule. It's the rule. I got nothing." It's the rule. So if you just go to your person and say, "I'm sorry, I have to have local food, I can't help it," then you can help, yeah, you can start to move that needle. So obviously, the theme here is that we need to organize. We all need to organize: slow food, animal production, businesses, advocacy. But we also need to take our individual volition and be immobile. Don't let them tell you it's too expensive, because it's not. I can prove it to you. You catch me in the hall, I can tell you 10 times, 10 ways, that it's not more expensive. So, one way, the University of Louisville is serving two steers a week. They're saving Sodexo $3,000 over, but Sodexo is already contracted for that beef. So they want to keep those relationships with Cargill, so they're not happy about this. But it is cheaper. So, anyway, just wanted to make that. So, we have four minutes. Does anybody have a question at all? Yes.
Hello, my name is Almeda. I'm from Georgia. I'm an herbalist and a farmer and a food science student, and I work for a land trust, and I do procurement for our USDA Farm to School grant.
Yep.
And it is hard.
Yes, it is.
And I basically feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place, and I'm working with small-scale diversified farmers, trying to get their food into the school system. School systems do not work within true cost accounting. They have very strict budgets.
$1.
$1. And I'm trying to get these farmers connected with the school system. I'm talking to the school nutrition managers, and I don't understand how to get their food for the right price, packaged and processed the way that it needs to be, and into the schools. The land trust I work for, we want to build a food hub, but right now, we don't. I'm like aggregating food in an old abandoned school with like one scale and a table, and it's crazy. But how? How are you doing? Give me those 10 ways. I need them right now.
Well...
I'm ready.
Number one is watermelon. Everybody I know who buys watermelon says it's cheaper than the commodity melon, and it also tastes better, so the kids eat it. Guess what? They're healthier. So, number two is apples. Now, that's, you're not, I don't know that you're, so do you still have peaches in season when you're in school?
No.
Yeah. So apples here are also cheaper than commodity apples. And we can talk later about whether or not the farmer goes directly to the kitchen, or whether or not the farmer goes to a broker. The broker usually gets the win because the farmer's, depending on how big your school system is. But we can talk later. But again, school lunch is a special case. It's different from your catered affair or your...
The budget.
The budget. And sometimes minds aren't as open. You're dealing with committees of people who, even if a few of them are really for it, sometimes, I feel you're paid.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think your question gets to the heart of the whole conversation, which is, what's the theory of change for making this happen? And obviously, it's very hard with schools. When I was at the SOL Association, where I used to work, we did a big school meals program called Food for Life, which has now grown a lot, and it's got a lot of catered, I think there's a million catered meals now going through the system, which is setting standards for local, sustainable, and freshly-prepared ingredients. But as you were saying, it's really hard to do that. But I think the answer is, as you just said, pick the low-hanging fruit. And people like us, who are maybe some influence, collective influence on the policy environment, we need to unlock some of these barriers which are causing, making it so difficult for you to do what you want to do. So I think it is a top-down and a bottom-up process, and I think it, in the end, is about individual citizens realizing how bad the present food system is, feeling empowered to act as citizens and consumers, but also acting politically to create pressure for the kind of policy reforms that were being discussed in the last session. And in the meantime, it's almost like there's a roadmap we're trying to draw here, and it's signposted. it's signpostless, because we've got to redesign the food systems and the ground up, we have to do the hubs which are going on in Louisville, we have to get the enabling policy framework coming down from above. And all we need you to be is courageous, because if you hang in there, it's going to happen.
It will, two years. And I, you know, Farm to School Task Force, where you and a mom and a resource counselor, a data collector, a student get together and do this organizing, and, and go to them and say, well, what about, fill in the blank? We've got some of Preston's chicken going to Jefferson County Public Schools, which is a huge district. And for years, I was sort of beating on them to get dark meat, because that's what others, Chicago Public Schools and in Oregon, they, they serve these drumsticks in Denver Public Schools. All of those chickens, chicken drumsticks are leftovers from Whole Foods buying this natural chicken from people in those areas, okay? So they're, they're like 99 cents a pound. Marksberry doesn't do that. So I've spent two years trying to get dark meat into the school system, and they finally said, we'll take an eight-piece cut-up or a 10-piece cut-up. That's the what Marksberry wants to do. So now Marksberry can cut up a chicken and sell it at almost the price of commodity, and this year, there is no, Tyson ran out of commodity, so, but he can cut up a chicken 10 ways and sell it competitively with commodity whole-bone-in chicken. Speaking of which, let me leave you with a thought, please do not ever buy again boneless, skinless chicken breasts. It is, it is tasteless, it is the worst kind of labor. It's the, the people who are paid the least are producing, you know, a piece of meat that is so outrageously priced, it does not begin to reflect what it's worth, it, it's just boneless, skinless, and if you get, learn to eat chicken with the bone in, it'll be more flavorful, you'll slow down, you won't eat as much, there's, it will change your life. Any more? And we'll talk. Anything else? Go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Jack Fisher. I'm originally from Louisville, Kentucky, but I'm currently running a business in Asheville, North Carolina. So it's nice to be in my hometown, get to see a lot of people. I wanted to just presence the issue of entrepreneurs as educators. And actually, my background is initially in crafts, fine arts, education, and kind of through fluke, found myself running a specialty foods business. And, and the point I just want to make and invite you all to comment on is that a lot of times, we split up these jobs, say, like advocacy and entrepreneurship, so that the onus of education lies on maybe policymakers or nonprofit organizations. And as an entrepreneur, it can feel really risky to let people know the difference between what you're doing and what someone else is doing. But, because it can seem really self-serving, of course, to the consumer. But the importance of that, because entrepreneurs are often the ones with the information and they understand the difference the best, which is what's motivating them, the importance of that, I think, can't be underestimated. It, on the one hand, can make for great marketing, but even if it fails as marketing, hopefully it succeeds as education. And the example I want to throw out there, of course, is my own business, which is, I make an almond butter. And one of the things people don't know a lot about almonds is that they are the main factor in colony collapse disorder with honeybees. Honeybees, which haven't been brought up a lot at the conference so far, but are obviously extremely important in our food economy. And if you want to make a big impact on honeybees, you want to know where your almonds are coming from. So you can dig into that on your own time, but just saying something like that often occurs to people, as they really expect me to just talk to them about how I want them to buy my almond butter. And I'd really rather talk to them about honeybees. So I just want to invite you all to hopefully encourage, but also comment on the importance of informing people, not just from the motivation of making sales, making it a shared risk, where I'll take the risk to be an educator rather than an entrepreneur sometimes, because it's frankly more important at times, so.
Judy?
Yeah. I totally agree with that comment. And I, I heard Willis Harmon, founder of the World Business Academy, once say that he felt like all businesses should have education as a product, and I think that's true. And at the White Dog, I used to say that I use good food to lure innocent customers into social activism. And that's what we did, we, we were kind of a hub for information, we had table talks with meals on public, issues of public concern, we took tours of people out to see the farms, where our food comes from, and took them on solar house tours and tours to prisons, to the prison garden, where we talked to the inmates about how gardening helped to heal them. So I couldn't agree more that there's so many ways that entrepreneurs can educate about food and about society and, and culture. And so it's, why not? You know? Thanks for bringing that up.
Entrepreneurs are probably the most motivated to get the education output, they're the ones with the least amount of time, and, because they're running their business. And I think it's really important to, to organize, and, and all the organizations and nonprofits that are represented here, and there's a new great one that's founded in Kentucky, the Local Food Association, it's the, it's the nation's only trade association for local food, I had to put a plug in for them. And I think all of the efforts combined, it's just like Mr. Berry said, it's lots of small solutions.
Just a point about how we get this information across, because one of the problems that we faced in the organic movement for many years is that the thing, the bad practices that we were trying to alert the public to, of course, were, looked as if we were being aggressive towards farmers and the food industry. And I think it needs to be possible now for a new approach, less angry, as you were saying earlier, where we can discuss an issue, for instance, like as I was saying earlier, antibiotics resistance, which is clearly a terrible thing, which is going to rob the next generation of the use of antibiotics if we're not careful. We don't have to do it by demonizing the intensive dairy farmers or livestock producers who are only just trying to make a business decision at the moment. We just need to get the information out there in an honest way. And I think you can tell, we need, we have a responsibility to tell people how bad it is, but we can do it in a way which isn't angry, and which isn't creating a polarity between the, the companies that are just trying to stay in business, who probably, you know, the people who are running them have got kids, and they're probably worried about the effect of, of antibiotics on their children. We just need to have an honest debate about these things, and then the transformational will happen because of people's awareness. So I think we need, we're at a moment now where if we want all this stuff to go mainstream, we have to have a slight shift in the way we've been historically and do things differently in the future.
And one more, one more question. Go ahead.
Nancy Bentley from Fair Hill, Maryland, and I have a small CSA, and I do a program, Healthy Food for Healthy Kids, where I was contacted to go out, and they do meet the farmer. So I go out to the elementary schools and I talk about vegetables. Well, we're, my husband's here, and we're trying to purchase a farm next to us to bring the school kids out, because they have raised beds, and the first graders get to do one thing, and the second graders another, and then you have summer, and then they miss, they, so they don't get the full, you know, scheme of what actually, from the seed to when it goes onto the plate. So we're trying to bring kids out there. I also have University of Delaware students who come out and they work for food, so we have those programs. But what's really hard is, God bless my husband, I mean, he works as many hours as he can, and then I am doing the farming myself, and then to actually hire, afford to hire someone for me to go out to do the education is, which, which is really in my heart. So trying to make a buck, you know, like the first gentleman there, you know, trying to, food is so important, and to put the value into it, and to have these little kids who, I had a couple there last week, they were like, I want to be a farmer, and, you know, how can you instill in them that they could actually make a living at doing what they really love?
That seemed like a lot of questions.
No. I mean, I, I think it does speak to the challenge. I'm drawn to organizations and work that always have crap business models, because all the things worth doing seem to be unsustainable in our current system. But I think that the issue of, and I think there's actually a very good link there, is the role of enterprises as platforms for education, as well as income-generating profit operations, need to be woven together. And that means also measuring what is the educational impact. And what I hear is a farm operation that is growing human capital, because kids get to learn a connection to food, and they can therefore navigate those food choices because they see them. And that may just need to be woven into what is that business model.
So I'm happy to talk with anyone, and you tell me where, and I'll be there. Okay, all right, good. And Carol Gunderson, if you are in the audience, if you would meet us also, you might be able to help. She just wants more resources and more help, and, you know, yeah.
So table six at lunch, right?
Well, whatever. Thank you very much, and have a great break.
Thanks so much, wonderful panel. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and so be back here at 11:40 for the culture panel. Thank you.